Now I have it.
Okay.
But I might make it. I might make it. No, I would do that.
It's been seven thirty. I'm going to open the meeting and I will say right up front that this meeting is being recorded. And Danielle, if you would like to read that little verb from the governor, please?
Sure. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general laws, chapter 30A, section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the North Reading Community Planning Commission is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by visiting https://us2web.zoom.us/j/9854300926 or by calling in 1308-715-8592, meeting code 9854300926.
Okay. Yeah, so I want to do, I want to start. We'll start right out with 148, 150 Park Street. And we can now, let's see, I'm looking for this memo here. So, so what are the changes on that today? So where are we with that?
Chris is going to get us started.
Okay, Chris?
All right. So basically, we went with Finecom last week.
I'm sorry, this is Chris, Chris Latham, because it's being recorded.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Yes, sorry.
And there's me.
So Chris Latham for the applicant.
Thank you.
So, so basically, we met with Finance Committee last week, and there was a suggestion made that we add language to the bylaw that basically states that the affordable housing unit shall be affordable in perpetuity. So if I can share my screen for a moment, I can show you folks where that is in the revised bylaw.
Okay.
So basically, I don't know if you can see it, but it's this highlighted section right here.
We don't have it. We don't have it yet.
It didn't, it didn't share, Chris.
Oh, didn't share?
Well.
All right, there we go. So I'll do this. Let me see if I can share. And then let me just show you this. So
That's a nice picture.
So hopefully you can see this now. It's the highlighted section there. So as we, as we discussed previously, we proposed an increase in the affordable housing units to 15%. And then we, we just added it at the end here in perpetuity. So hopefully you folks can see that highlight.
We know where we
Oh, I think it's on the wrong page.
We can just see the perspective right, right now. The color perspective is up.
Just the rendering.
Yeah.
Oh, the rendering's up? Okay. How do I share this though?
Nice rendering.
Thank you.
It is nice, isn't it?
Beautiful.
All right. So you, I guess you, you can't see what I'm seeing then. Anyways, it's in, it's in the section 200-171. It's the second paragraph in the first sentence. And it's in the warrant article that Danielle has, I believe Danielle, you probably shipped that around?
Yes. So you'll have it in your meeting materials. It's the copy of the article and just the language perpetuity was added to be sure the affordability would stay forever. I was, and I think that was the only final change since the last time we, we spoke about that from what I can remember. But that final text that you have in your meeting packet is as it was submitted to, for the warrant. And with the public hearing being on April 6th, there, I mean, you know, minor changes can be made to it still, just as long as they're not major changes.
Yeah, but I, I see, I see his homeowner units, homeownership units in perpetuity. So I found it in the, in the article.
Thank you. Yeah. So it's, it's in perpetuity. It's 15% and it's to be totally located on, on the premises. So those were some of the comments that the Finance Committee had made over the last two, two meetings that we had with them. And then Larry's here as well. And Larry's made some modifications, as you've seen in the rendering. So I don't know if Larry wants to talk about that briefly. I know you have a lot of things going on tonight. So we don't want to eat up too much of your time.
Won't take me long at all. Just this, this is more just to give you a sense that we did spend quite a bit of time to, to do fairly major rework of the elevations and didn't, didn't require too much in terms of the, the floor plan, but the, we've simplified quite a bit. And instead of sort of just doing a modeled building, we've now shifted more towards a building that feels more like an enclave of, of associated structures historically based and a little more consistent with a little bit of everything in the, in the center of town. But we're playing off of, to some extent, a little bit of the rural heritage, but more than anything, I think, you know, this just gives a, I, I think a better sort of assemblage of, of style and, and a clearer sense of each of the, the elements of the building. And so I think that's our goal here is to, to make this a much more rich and, and appropriate building. I think it's a rather, rather significant change from the previous variation in, in terms of its aesthetics. So just wanted to give you a sense of this for now. I don't have to explain too much in, in anything else. We've already covered the, the basics of the design.
Mr., Mr. Pierce?
Yes, Mr. Hayden.
So I must say, you did a nice job on this. It, it, I look at this and it, it really goes well with the original building. That's, that's, looks like it has been, did you, did you rotate it a little bit in this view from its original location?
The, yes, the, the McLean House. We did
The McLean House?
Yes.
Yeah, it's, it's, it looks like it's rotated a little bit. So it's more front, it's facing us nicely. What was the, what was the outcome at the historic district? I know that you folks went and talked to them or?
Well, we were meeting with them on Monday. We've shared with them, we, we, we shared with them, we've given all of the members large colored blueprints of the plan. And they felt like that would be helpful to, to have, to look at, to talk amongst themselves. More helpful than, than looking at on, looking at it on the computer. And they have it, they have it in email form like, like this with the, with PDF also. So they're able to communicate between, you know, they, they got it a few days ago, between then and our meeting on Monday, they're going to, they're, it'll be our first interaction over, over the, the plan revisions that were the result of our first meeting with them. So I suspect that we may have one more meeting with the historic district commission after Mondays as a, to tweak and fine tune. But I, I, I think that this is, is getting us pretty close with that.
Okay. I was, I was just, I was just interested.
Okay.
Here, Pierce?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my apologies. I, I think, I just wanted to get clarification as I was signing on. I believe, did Attorney Latham say that it was going to be 15% affordable?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
And, and we, we met with the Finance Committee last week. It was our second meeting with them. We, they had made recommendations that the amount of affordable units be increased. We increased that to 15%. They had made a recommendation that all the affordables be located on the premises. We made the modifications to simplify that so that all the affordables are to be located on the premises. And we added language that they had suggested. And, and there weren't any votes. These were comments by members of the Finance Committee that we incorporated. So they, they also made the recommendation that it state that it be in perpetuity affordable. And that, we added that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any, anything else you want to add to that at this point?
I think we're all settled. Bruce, you have any comment you want to?
I don't. I just wanted to share the, where we are with the historic district commission. And I suspect that we'll meet with them twice before we see you folks again.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Chris, you can take your screen share down.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, before they disappear completely, anybody else have any, have any comments or comments for them or questions at this point? This is just informational. Okay, looks like we're all set. Thanks very much, Chris, Bruce, everybody.
All right. Thanks, guys.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Hey, Warren, you got your new member down in the bottom corner there? Or now he's in the center?
Yeah.
Jeremiah is here.
There you are, Jeremiah. Good. Um, we got a few minutes here. So how about if we do the bond release? We have a bond release here somewhere. So.
Mr. Pierce, we're going to do a workshop. So you can teach the select board how to always seem to produce some extra minutes. Maybe we can do a joint meeting and, you know, you and Mr. Hayden would just be like, yeah, it's incredible every time. I'm jealous.
Well, we've been doing this a long time. So we know how to keep things moving along. So for Mallard Lane, we have a bond release.
So that's actually just, yeah, that's actually, rather than a bond, that's the remaining release of their inspection funds. I think that was left in the account.
Yeah, that's what it says, inspection fund. So do we need a motion for that?
I believe we have a motion for that.
Okay.
Eric Pierce, I move the Community Planning Commission vote to release the remaining inspection funds, the amount of $2,900 for the Mallard Lane subdivision.
Second half.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. Redloff. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And, okay, and looks like we have, Jeremiah, did you vote on that? Or are you waiting on that? You're, you're muted. So you're going to have to unmute yourself.
Apologies, apologies. I guess I would abstain at this point since I really don't know enough. So.
So you could have, but okay, then I'm going to have a four in favor, one abstention. And so it is, it is passed. Thank you. Okay. What else do we got? Jump on here. We can vote to endorse those plans. We don't have any questions on them on the 239 North Street plan. Is that correct? We, everything is?
Actually, there is, um, I still need to hear back from the fire department. They had to redo that arch area a little bit to accommodate the height. And I haven't heard back yet whether that's okay. So we should really do that at the next meeting.
We'll do that at the next meeting, move that off. And 303 Main Street?
Well, 303 Main Street, we're still getting a clean copy of those plans. We had a pretty rough scan. And we're just working with the engineer to get a clean copy. So I think we'll be ready for those next time, too.
Next, okay. See, 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 Vincenzo, see how fast you get these things done when you just put it all off till next week?
Also, I, I would say that in my experience so far in the select board, there's a lot more matter of fact at the CPC and a lot less commentary. How's that? Let me, let me put it like that.
Well, that's what, that's what a planning does, what it does though, in, in true fact, we deal with facts and we deal with, with rules and regulations and laws. And, and we apply them, you know, so that it's actually a little more cut and dried. So I do understand there's more conjecture in there and the select board in things. There's a lot more sometimes to look at. So we are kind of lucky to have a, in some cases, a cut and dried situation. So.
It does make it easier.
It does make it a little easier. So, um, so neither one of those are going to be, so 303, we're going to wait on that then. And we already did that and that.
Do your letter, Warren. I think we could do that.
Okay, we can do it. Did everybody get a chance to read the outreach letter to, for the project? Does anybody, do you have any comments or questions on it?
Nice job.
Yeah, it looks, it's, it's, it's clear enough that we're just looking, I'm glad you put in there. We're not looking to do a taking or anything, you know, just looking for people who volunteered to work with us on this, not, not a, I'm glad you made it very clear because I think that was important. That they realized that we're trying to do something with them, not on them or for, you know, without them.
Do we want to talk about, because the letter does say to contact me about scheduling a time to meet with us to discuss this project. Do we want to talk about some possible times we could do that? Um, is that more of an email scheduling discussion? Is that?
Yeah, I think that's more of an email schedule. Because I think you, you know, first of all, I think you need to hear first from a few people. Let's hear what we got. Let's hear what we hear from them and see. I mean, if we only get one person that responds, it's going to be a little difficult to, it's going to be extremely easy to have a meeting because you've only got one person to deal with. But if you get your comments from people that say, no, it's going to be nighttime or no, it's going to be daytime, you know, then you'll have a better feel for when it would be, when, when, when a productive meeting could be actually scheduled as opposed to just one-on-one or something. So.
Sure. Okay, that sounds good. So I'll leave it open as far as whether we're meeting, you know, in, in a small group or one-on-one, depending on who's interested and when they can meet is probably, you know.
It might be, I would not discourage them. I would not discourage them from this, you know, you know, in other words, I'd be willing to say, we'll do more than one. If we can get three people at this meeting and two people at that meeting, that would be okay. I mean, because, you know, it's going to take a little while. And you, we also might find that if we get two or three people into a meeting and we go through this whole thing and then they go talk to the other people and say, you know, you really ought to stick your nose in here. Sometimes that reference will get us the, the people we need. So let's just see what we can get. We'll take what we can get, see what we can do with it.
Great. Thank you. I'll send it out.
Okay. Okay. So ZBA, do we have any ZBAs tonight? Are we good?
I don't believe we do.
I didn't look. I'm just looking at the agenda. It doesn't list any.
You know what? Let me just double check. I don't, I don't remember. I don't remember one coming in, but let me just quickly check.
Yeah.
No, we have none this, this time.
All right. All right. Well, we still got a few minutes before our first public hearing. So, so our first continued public hearing. So really, we have left is that 5G cellular and, and did everybody look at the information in the other, and read the, the draft regulations and all that?
I read most of it. I didn't get to the, to the full law.
Yeah.
Because I wasn't able to down, totally download it when I had the chance, like I just did. Like I just did.
Yeah. Well, well, you know, well, the law is, one thing, the law is gives, gives, you know, the, the, the people who are putting this thing up, certain rights. And it's very similar to the 86 telecommunications act. But, but, um, this is so much more, there's so much more to this. I mean, it's one thing to put a few cell towers up and cover a whole area, but it's another thing when every 200 feet or 300 feet, there's got to be an antenna. And, and there has to be equipment to go with that antenna, the power of the antenna because these, uh, these 5G network is power hungry. So it's not just getting the units on the poles and getting all the equipment on the poles. It's getting the power independent of the lights on the light poles. Because I mean, obviously, light poles are what we're looking at using for, for mounting these things. Because we have places where that's the only thing we have. There is a light pole. And the requirement to replace that light pole with a similar light pole with the, with the box, with all the equipment either inside it or, or out of view, because it's looks pretty ugly. If you look at the pictures, having it hanging on the pole looks pretty ugly. And which, um, if you, if you're hanging it on one of these old wooden poles, it's already got 37 wires on it. You probably won't see it that much. But if you try to hang it in one of the subdivisions that has decorative lamps, decorative light poles, it's, you just can't do that. So, so is that part of what you're talking about? You thought might be a little over the top, Danielle?
Not necessarily. No. I think when, when those Burlington regulations came out, it was very early. And I don't think that it had really been fully defined. You know, people, towns weren't really understanding yet what they could and couldn't do. I think what, what KP is telling us we should try to stick to is what they've put in that draft policy. And I think so, the way they've explained this to me is the best thing to do is the select board would be the ones to pass a policy because they, that to govern utilities in rights of way. And as part of that policy, or as a kind of a corollary to it, we can have, you know, an aesthetics policy. But I think that we're, we're needed as far as making recommendations for what's appropriate aesthetically. So if you look at the policy that KP has prepared for us, it's not really for our board to pass, but there are these blanks in there having to do with aesthetics. And this is for us to make recommendations for what we think is appropriate. Now, part two is to regulate anything on private property would require a zoning bylaws. I have submitted a zoning bylaw for town meeting. It's, it's in the folder. It would refer back to the policy that presumably if they see fit, the select board would be taking up and passing. And I spoke with the TA and he thought that that could be discussed at their, on their agenda on April 12. Now, if their policy does not pass by the time town meeting rolls around, we should pass over the article because it won't make sense. So select board policy for rights of way, zonings, you know, in the purview of the CPC for private property. And, you know, within the policy would be aesthetics, which would be, you know, us making recommendations. So that's kind of where we stand. The
So when you're talking about, when you talk about zoning for private property, are you talking about the ability of a private landowner to lease space to the 5G network to put an antenna on their property?
Yes.
So maybe on their flagpole with something buried in the ground?
Right.
Or, or, or an equipment cabinet at the bottom, but certainly not something. Yeah.
Right. Maybe there's a pole or
There's going to be, because I'm looking at some of the fees and some of the dollars that they're talking about needing per antenna or per pole. That's just very expensive. I mean, I don't know how the heck they're going to justify spending that kind of money when they got to have an antenna every 200 or 300 feet.
Yeah, 5G is not the most efficient way to broadcast.
No.
And it doesn't penetrate Stonewell at all.
Yeah, yeah. Well, high frequency.
Yeah, that's right.
Low wavelength.
You and I understand that very well, Warren. Most people don't.
I spent some time in the military with that stuff. So.
I repaired a lot of it.
So I, I don't, you know, I'm having a, I'm having a difficult time seeing this be something that anybody likes, you know, even the town meeting. You tell them they're going to put big, big ugly, hanging big ugly boxes every three or four telephone poles up and down their street, you know? They're going to say, isn't there another way? Is there a better way to do, is there another way to do this? And I think the only, the only other thing I saw in a, in a different involvement was the, was the vaults. But the problem with that is moisture getting into the vaults. So that's, that's an issue.
Um, well, I think one thing we can do is even though we can't ban them outright, we can, we can rank preference for where in town we want to see them. So I would suggest, for example, you know, industrial office, then after that, you know, highway business, then after that, general business, then after that, you know, and, and the residential and the historic town center areas would, you know, would be last.
You mean, try to take control of the, at, at, at the, at the, phase it all in? Allow it to come in, but allow it to, but force it to phase in?
Well, we can't not allow it. So we have to say where we prefer it to be located. So they have to look first at a location in industrial office and tell us there's no location available before they could move on to highway business, for example.
Well, my concern here is that there's got to be, there has to be an initial hookup of some kind. In other words, if you got a whole area, let's say Concord Street agreed to put it one end to the other. It's got to be fed from one end, but then nothing beyond it on the, on the, on the west and nothing beyond it on the east. How does, how do, they still got to feed it somehow?
I mean, that would be up, you know, to them to figure out, I guess.
If they, if they're more than 300 feet apart, they can't talk to each other. That's, so I'm, 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 you know, it seems to me that it's going to be kind of a difficult thing. And I'd really, I'd really like to see, I really wouldn't mind making the, putting, making the best bylaw that we possibly can. And then, and, and doing some kind of phasing just as you mentioned. But I'd like to see it implemented someplace else and see if, if somebody's solved enough of these problems to make it, you know, to make it palatable.
Well, so far, they've really only been coming to denser urban areas. They haven't really come to towns like ours yet. At least not Massachusetts.
Far apart.
Yeah. And it's not even so much a phasing. It's more of a location preference.
Yep.
Where we're telling them, please go here, but if you can't, you might consider there. Um, we can regulate a little bit how far they can be from people's houses, for example. Um, it's just, and we can, we can say that in the historic district, you can't put it on, you know, period lighting. You have to do it on, you know, a utility box or something. I mean, you can do things like that.
It's looking at the size of the equipment package that's needed. I don't know. I'm not comfortable with this whole thing yet.
Right.
You know, go ahead, Ryan.
Yeah.
Ryan, you
Or turn up your volume.
Can't hear you.
No.
Not yet. Yep. There you go.
Oh, you're in.
I'm there. All right, I'm back. Um, we don't know what 6G is going to look like, but is, is there a restoration clause with this stuff? Or is this stuff like here to stay when they do it? And just thinking in advance of the type of towers they put in?
Yeah.
If that would affect what you choose to do.
If you read the thing, there is a clause in there that requires them to come up to decide how much money would cost to take the whole damn thing out and throw it away should that happen. And we did the same thing with the cell towers. We made it available for them to have enough money in a bond or something so that if, if, if everything goes to 5G, we no longer want the cell towers. There's got to be the money there and the bond there to take them back out. Okay. In this one as well. And removal clause. Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, they changed those historic light poles. They're going to have to put the old ones back.
Exactly. I suggest that they store them someplace safe.
Yeah, I would think so. This is
Because I don't know what, this, this doesn't, this, this might be the next thing, but it doesn't seem to me to be the next best thing.
No. No.
So Danielle, was any other thing you wanted to talk about on this 5G? Because I know we
Well, um, so I guess for this to, for us to be able to take any steps with it. So I guess the, the options would be if we do nothing at all, and they do come to town, they can kind of do what they like. If we at least have an aesthetics policy in place, we can have them adhere to that, to the degree that they're required to adhere to it. So I think, I mean, my recommendation would be if we had a little time, maybe to continue the conversation, either at the end of this meeting or at our next meeting, um, it would be great if we could come up with some aesthetic policy recommendations, which would be filling in those yellow highlighted areas that KP gave us in their sample bylaw.
Yep.
And, and give that to the select board and make a recommendation that they pass that policy for rights of way. And then that we go ahead and follow that up with, with a zoning policy that then refers back to that at town meeting. So I did draft a zoning bylaw, but it is not done being looked at by KP. They needed more time on it. So that's not really like ready to go. But I did submit it kind of as a placeholder in the warrant. But I'll update you on that as soon as I have something more definite. But, I mean, of course, if we don't want I mean, of course, if we don't want to go ahead with anything, we don't have to go ahead with anything. But I think my recommendation would be to at least, you know, try to recommend a policy if we can for aesthetics, just so we have some control.
Well, I agree. I think we should put one together and we, and we should be um, we should be relatively strict with it because I mean, I wouldn't mind battling with them a little if they come in, but it also may slows them down um, a little bit. Um. And again, because we don't, because we're not so dense, it's gonna be more difficult for it to be financially practical to put it in, in our town, because they're gonna need to down many antennas for so few people, basically. So uh, and that they're looking at the costs of it, it would probably not, it would, it would probably slow them down a little. That would also give us an opportunity to watch what some of the other communities do and, and how they handle it. You know, how, how they handle it, what they put up for structures and, and what it looks like and whether we can modify us to match. I mean, I have nothing against letting somebody else invent this wheel and then stealing it. That's probably one of the best ways to uh, to get something that looks good and works good, so. So um, so yeah, let, we'll, we'll forge ahead. We'll put some things in there, uh, the aesthetics and then we'll, and we'll put a lot together and see what we do. And, and um, and go from there.
Okay.
Okay, it being uh, eight oh two, I'm gonna uh, open the continued public hearing for one oh four Lower Road. And we have uh, somebody picking up the uh, Mark, are you doing this, or?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, would you like me to begin?
Yes, please. Please say your name for the red, for the recording.
Yeah, good evening, um, Mr. Chairman and uh, other commission members. Uh, my name is Mark Mastriani. I'm here representing Pulte Homes of New England. We are the builder and developer of Martin's Landing. Uh, with me tonight are, um, is Matt Leidner of Civil Design Group. He's our civil engineer. Uh, um, I have Dan Dumas here from MDM, who is the traffic consultant on this project. And I think Bob Micho, his partner, will be here shortly. Uh, and also Dan Coughlin, who's our water and sewer civil engineer from Coughlin Environmental uh, is here with us tonight as well, is our team of uh, engineers and professionals that is, that have been helping me uh, with this permit modification request and uh, you know, to respond to all of the questions we've, we've heard. So as presented at the last two CPC meetings, uh, we're here for a permit modification and a special permit uh, at Martin's Landing. Uh, we last appeared before the CPC on February 2nd. Uh, and through the, through the course of, of two hearings, uh, there were some really good questions and important, you know, items and concerns that were raised by uh, both the commission and um, members of the public. Um, you know, these items uh, have been discussed at length and we feel we have thoroughly, you know, addressed um, the items by either myself, Pulte, and, or our team. Um, but we are certainly here and, and happy to discuss any of those items uh, in more detail. If I can answer any additional questions you may have. Um, uh, since at the last, uh, at the conclusion of the last CPC meeting was that one of the last remaining items, open items that we needed to address was to uh, go before the zoning board of appeals for a variance uh, for the additional um, fifth story. And I'm pleased to report back to you, I know we've continued a couple of times, um, that after a very extensive uh, planning process, uh, the ZBA unanimously voted to uh, issue that the variance for the fifth story. It's important to mention that in order to issue the variance, the board had to determine that the relief uh, could be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. And that relief could be granted uh, without substantial det- uh, derogation from the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw. Um, so, so that's great news. Um, and before turning back over to the commission, you know, I'd like to take a moment to um, to recap and, and um, the commitments that, you know, we have made and the design enhancements to the project that, you know, we have made as a re- as a result of the input received through bo- through both the CPC hearing process and the zoning board of appeal process. Um, so new from the ZBA process and I've submitted to the CPC is that, you know, we have committed to provide fifteen percent of the additional fifty-two units that we're seeking uh, as affordable units. Uh, and we see that as a significant commit- uh, commitment that will benefit, um, you know, the whole town. Uh, my understanding is that the creation of new affordable housing is a real focus and a real goal of, of the town. Uh, and is also consistent with your housing production plan. Um. Yeah, the, the affordable housing came from a request and originated from the Board of, some, Board of Selectmen. And we were happy to provide the much-needed housing, affordable housing. Um, based on the CPC feedback at the last meeting, we did, uh, we have committed to a second, to installing a second elevator in each of the four five-story um, proposed uh, future buildings. Uh, we see this as a significant commitment and a, a substantial improvement to those five-story uh, buildings. Um, also new from the ZBA process is we've committed, uh, we've committed to provide ladder access walkways behind uh, six of the remaining buildings, uh, in Martin's Landing. Um, for the fire department for an added measure of safety. Uh, I worked very closely with Deputy Chief Galvin um, in order to, to, um, to receive his specs for those walkways and, and be able to provide those walkways for him and his team. Um, and so those, those um, rear ladder access walkways have been added to the site plans, which uh, have been submitted um, to your commission. So they've been added to the plans. Um, and one final um, additional commitment that I wanted to mention is at the last CPC meeting, we, um, we just, I think actually the seat, one of the commission members and maybe one of the members of the public or, or a member, uh, residents at Martin's Landing, you know, asked about um, electric car charging stations. So, uh, you know, we heard that request and we, you know, we thought that was a a good idea and it could be a, a, a benefit to the project. And so, you know, we've committed uh, in a letter to the CPC to add a dual electric charging, electric car charging station to the plans. Um. So, you know, in closing, uh, you know, we feel that the requested special permit modification and parking special permit really has, has good merit. And um, you know, it, it involves a minor site plan change. Uh, it's really a vertical change. And the new five-story proposed buildings still remain under the six foot height requirement. Um, the density, even with the extra units, remains well below the density that's allowed by zoning. And, and the extra units really provide more like-minded neighbors um, to interact and, and social, and socialize with. Um, you know, we've had an opportunity to review the comment letters that have been submitted to the board. And our team, you know, put together and provided a very comprehensive response to each of those comments. You know, we took them very seriously. And we've, you know, we believe we've addressed all of the, the comments and concerns that have been raised. Um, that, you know, and, and I just wanted to, you know, add that this um, this permit modification request is just tremendously important uh, to, to our company, to, you know, the success of Martin's Landing uh, in light of the substantial uh, unforeseen soil conditions that, you know, we, we found out there at Martin's Landing. I have gone over there, gone over that previous meetings. I certainly reviewed that at length, the ZBA process, and I'm happy to do it again, but there's a real real substantial problem out there. And, you know, and, and, you know, my company, we've, we've put our best foot forward here in order to, you know, solve the problem and, and continue to move forward. Um, so we hope that our, our commitments are, are, are well-received. And will, um, and have helped you to, you know, thoroughly review our request here. Uh, we thank you for your time. And we're, we're happy to, to review any aspects of the project and answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, um, any comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the board? Okay, um, I have just have a quick one. Um. The other comment, first the question. The affordable units, are you talking, are they gonna all be on the fifth story, or do you have, have you decided where those are gonna be?
No, um, they, um, what we committed to was that they would, um, would comply with the HCD guidelines so that they would be included in the subsidized housing, housing inventory. Um, and those guidelines, you know, those requirements, um, you know, basically uh, require that you um, inter-disperse them throughout the, through, throughout the project. So, um, what we propose is that we put, there's eight, uh, you know, affordable homes. And there's four five-story buildings proposed. So what we'd like to uh, propose and what is two in each of the four or five-story buildings. Um, that, that would comply with the, with the DHCD guidelines.
Okay, um. And I never, um, I know we talked about it and I know that you brought that up to the that, that part of what this was, was an attempt to mitigate a, a cost, but we never really got an estimate about the, what the real cost was to remove that soil. And, and my understanding is it's not really that. It's only somewhat contaminated. So there's
That, that is true. That is
That, that the actual cost may be far less than thirty, uh, units will provide you with.
Yeah, so, if, if I may, Mr. Chairman, um, so the, the the extra, um, the extra revenue from the extra unit will certainly help offset the costs that we are experiencing to deal with the contamination, contamination. But in no way does it cover the entire cost. Uh, or it, are we making more than the cost of the removal? So the, the estimates that we've provided is that the cost of the remediation and the removal of the soil will be between eight and twelve million dollars. And, um, but what you did say was, was important is that, um, it, it is correct. The amount of uh, ACM asbestos-containing material that is in the soil, you know, out there is considered de minimis. There are not asbestos flying around everywhere. It, we're, we're working strictly with DEP and all guidelines uh, of DEP. And, um, and there's no imminent hazard out there at all. Um, but it's de minimis. But the problem is, is that once one piece of the ACM touched the, the pile, DEP considered that the entire pile was contaminated or a majority of the pile was contaminated. We've done thousands of tests. And, um, and so that they're requiring a, a majority of, of the, you know, thirty thousand cubic yard pile to be removed. And, and you can't just remove it and, and bring it anywhere. You have to remove it in accordance with all DEP. And it's their whole process. Um, and it has to go to a licensed facility and and that really drives the price. So, to, to be clear, the hardship and the financial impact of the remediation was not, was not considered when we bought the project and is a significant and a significant financial cost to us. And this, this uh, permit modification is a solution to help us resolve the issue, but in no way does it cover the entire cost of the, of the process. We've already spent plus a million dollars, you know, working with DEP and all the LSPs and doing all the testing, you know, today.
Yeah, I've dealt with this before myself, doing uh, remediation with this asbestos involved and having to bring asbestos companies in. It's a it has to be handled very carefully. They're very strict about it. So you are correct with that. So, um, um, but my other comment is I, I, it, it, um, it does make the project a little bigger and I think it probably improves the tax base a little, which is a plus.
Yeah, we estimated an extra three hundred thousand dollars annually, um, in, in property taxes to the town each year.
Right, right. Okay, I thank you very much. Um, now do, um, this is a public hearing, so do I have any members of the public to have any questions? If you would, could let me know in some fashion that you would like to ask a question, now is the time. Please state your name and address before asking your question. I have any takers? Okay, um, so Mark, are we, are we waiting now for anything, updated plans or anything, or are we, uh?
No, we, uh, Matt Leidner's here from Civil Design Group and we, we captured all the commitments that we've made and all the plan changes that we've made. Um, you know, through the process and we, and we've submitted a, an updated plans to, to your office, um, that, that is complete and, and captures all of, all of the commitments and changes that we've proposed.
Okay.
This, Mr. Pierce?
Yes, Mr. Hayden.
So I gotta, I gotta a few things. Um. I was on the original EDC team that put this property out for RFP and reviewed all of the um, responses from people. And originally Pulte um, put in two concepts. One was fifty-five and older and one was affordable. And the differential in the um, purchase price was a, it was a third less for the affordable housing to build as many, as I recall. And suddenly they're adding an extra fifty-two units. And they immediately said, oh sure, we'll give you fifteen percent of the, the, the new fifty-two units. It's quite interesting. And also that the fifth story here until the building codes changed recently would not have, would not have been buildable, from what I understand. Um, the fourth story was buildable. Pardon?
Not wood construction, which is what they're doing.
Right, right. The fourth story was allowed because it was sprinkled when they came out with this originally. Since then, before, you know, before they've been able to build the last four units, four buildings, the construction standard has changed and now they can go to five stories.
Right.
Um, so there's that. The other thing is, is I walked that entire property with, with the representatives and they all knew of what was in the ground. And that there had been a central steam plant and there were, there were uh, buried pipes that were still in the ground and very safe in their in their uh, in situ position. And that they needed to be careful when they dug. And I don't know how careful they were and if they didn't cause their own problem because they dug up that orange brick pipe that was uh, that was loaded with this, that had asbestos for um, strength in it. Um, but I was, I, you know, I was around. It was like, they all knew what was going on. So it's the, the extra cost should have been calculated in originally when they purchased the property. And somebody, I don't know. You know, I don't know if someone didn't do their homework or missed it. But, you know, now we're gonna get fifty-two more units. Yeah, we'll get a little bit more tax revenue. Um, but then there's already, there's already a hundred and fifty units sold. And, you know, they were sold in a, in a complex that's gonna have nine buildings with four hundred and fifty people. Now they're gonna have nine buildings with five hundred, or I should say apartments. But nine, nine unit, uh, nine buildings with five hundred apartments. Not all those people are happy about what, um, what's going on. Yeah, there's, these answers have been made, you know, and i- it's interesting, the parking, you know, people not being able to park near their house and, and they said they went out and they did all these studies and they went and looked at, at the parking lots in the middle of the night. Well, I don't know who, you know, it's hard to, to, to discount that. But the residents, you know, I'm gonna say the residents were wrong, that they weren't able to park closer to their own building. Uh, they could be different. You know, I don't know if they can do different things in the parking lot or not, but it, it's just interesting. And we've only got you've only got a hundred and fifty out of, out of four hundred and fifty from the original. And now it'll be five hundred. So we're not even halfway there and they're already complaining about some things. And of course, those original units were forced And of course, those original units were four stories with one elevator. And, you know, that's a building code that, that we really don't have, have control over. But it's still interesting, it took so long and once they had a breakdown in the elevator, it took so long to get it repaired. You know, that's, that's a management issue there. So I, you know, right there, it's hard for me to, to, to believe what management's bringing. You know, and Mark's been around since the beginning. So it, it's, it's just, it's, it's hard to fathom that, you know, the extra 52 units is a good thing for the town. It brings us a little bit more tax money. It brings us eight units, but they didn't want to bring any. So originally, if they had built it and, and paid more money than they did for the property. But I wouldn't expect them to pay what they did for the property. But added their probably 20%, which is what we were going to require. There've been a whole heck of a lot of, a lot more affordable units in that, that area than they're going to be with their 15% or eight units out of the 500. So I, I just have, I'm having some problems here with this. Since I was, you know, I sat on EDC and then I sat on the CPC at the same time, looking at this project from the beginning. So, I mean, water is also an issue. I read some of the fire department and the state fire marshals. Interesting comments about would there be enough pressure and can the, can the North Reading pumpers pump the water up the standpipe to the fifth floor? Are they going to have enough flow to fight a fire? You know, that, that, that's a question. Will they have enough, will they have enough flow volume at high enough pressure? So that when everybody's taking a shower on the fifth floor of those buildings in the morning or at night, will there be a problem with their water pressure? And will it affect the rest of the town in other place? Hopefully, when the new, when the new water system comes online in a few years, that will be alleviated. But we still have to have the pressure to pump it there. So there's, there's those questions. I'm not so concerned about the wastewater because that plant should have been designed with extra capacity. You know, leaching field is, is the big capacity for those things. So they're increasing their, their leaching field. But I thought they were supposed to have their, already have the license from the state before we permitted anything for, for buildings about leaching and septic. That's kind of a question for you, Mr. Pierce.
And whether or not they have a, whether or not their groundwater discharge permit allows for the extra units, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, that's the question. Because I, I know that, I don't think we voted without that the, the first time around. And I think from what I read in the documentation today, that they don't have that permit yet from the state for the extra discharge. I don't know, is that true or not, Mark? Do you have the permit?
Uh, no, that is true. So the process is, is that once we hopefully the local approvals, our next step was to go and then amend the groundwater discharge permit from the DEP, which is the controlling entity and the permitting entity of this.
I always thought we did it the other way around. We were looking for the permits upfront so that we could then be confident when we, when we permit the project, it'd be done and ready to go. So.
What's the, Jim, Mark, do you know, just offhand, or maybe Dan can answer this question, what the total flows, the average, the daily flow is calculated at? You know, Dan?
Are you talking about what?
Septic system.
Yeah, the total flow for the development?
Daily flow, the design flow.
It's 60,000 is basically the max day flow.
Yeah, so that means that since it's over 20,000, basically the DEP is going to inspect it.
Yes, oh, yes. It's all controlled through the DEP.
Yeah, basically over 10,000.
DEP work, so I know they, they, they do their own inspections, they have their own people that do it. So, so the answer to that is, Chris, is that they wouldn't be able to put that online without the DEP inspecting it, which means they'd have to have a current groundwater discharge permit in place and their approval of a re, of their redesign and then inspected by the DEP before they could access it, so.
All right, so permitting us giving a permit prior to them getting the groundwater discharge is all right then?
Yeah, because it doesn't really, it, it, it's, it's apples and it's two different things, so apples and oranges.
Okay, okay. Well, you hate to have them build something that they can't use, right?
Well, we, we wouldn't, we wouldn't build it. We would, hopefully, if we're successful at the local level, we would, we would move right into the street level. And that, that to us seemed like the appropriate, you know, path, path forward. And, and if there's, if there's an opportunity, I would love, I would love to be able to respond to some of the comments and concerns that, that you've brought up at the right time.
Yeah.
Please.
Okay. So any other questions or comments? Danielle, you know, we have a conditional approval that we have with us. Do we, are we missing anything that we need to wait on here? You're muted or something?
Oh, no, she's got that.
We can't hear you.
Yeah. Your, your mini mouse today.
Yeah.
Or Carvel.
You had yes or no when I asked the question. I mean, we've done that before.
So ask the question, Warren.
Yes, well, the question would be, do we, do we need anything else before, before we hold a vote on the conditional approval? We don't need anything else.
I, I have a suggestion for Danielle. Danielle, if you call in from the number there, that, on the, next to New York, you'll be able to use your cell phone while we see you. I had to do this the other day.
Okay.
Yeah, I was going to suggest that, it's a good idea. Yeah, this is still. And she, she can let herself in too. So you'll have to mute your, mute your computer and then use your phone.
I think Melrose needs 5G, what do you think, Chris?
I don't know, I think she mutes her computer and then turns it on and there's a problem with the speaker. I, I think it might be in her hardware, not her software.
Yeah.
Sorry, Danielle.
Okay, so we, so, okay, so we have a conditional approval as everybody kind of reads through that. If any changes or additions you want to make to it, the way it's written. Jeremiah, have you had a chance to read through everything?
Uh, no, I'm definitely still catching up on everything.
Okay, do you, okay.
There were too many meetings for him that, that he missed, Warren, to, to even watch him or read in on him.
Yeah, I know, that's why I'm asking if you read, if he read himself in, that was all. So you will, you will be abstaining for this vote?
I think that's best, yeah.
Well, that's okay, I'm just making, making everything clear before we begin. Thank you. Now our phone doesn't work.
She's finding the phone number.
It's like she's dialing.
There we go. Now you'll have to let yourself in.
She, she gave the host to the chair.
Oh, oh. You gotta let her in, Warren.
Okay, hang on here. Okay, you're admitted.
No. No, you're talking on your, on your computer, not on your cell phone.
Mute your, mute your computer. No, I can't hear you.
Oh, she's still eminent, she's still muted on her phone, Warren.
Oh, hang on, hang on.
You can unmute her.
Can you unmute yourself on your phone? Can I unmute you?
I'm sure you can.
It might be like star six too, I've heard people say that on other meetings, I don't know if that works.
Nope, you're still muted. Nope. I don't have.
I don't even see her right now.
Yeah, I don't think she's calling user one, that's been on, they've been on for a while.
Right. I think she signed off and is signing back in.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, we'll wait just a minute for if she has problems, we'll just move on.
You'll have, you'll have to let her in, Warren, that's all.
Yeah, that's okay, I did, I admitted her already once, so.
It must be her hardware, because she, she, this is the same sound.
I'm going to admit her now. There you go, you're admitted. You're muted.
Hear me?
Yep, sounds good.
Okay, good, sorry, everyone.
Okay.
Okay, um, so no, I wasn't awaiting anything further from any of the department comments.
Okay.
I, um, no, I didn't have anything further.
Okay, well, there's nothing further than Ryan, if you have a motion, would you read it for us?
Mr., Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could I interrupt? And I always hate to do that. But as this being a permanent procedure, I believe my understanding is that I need four out of the four active members.
Yes.
Oh, yes. And, and I'm really hopeful to get four out of four. And, and I just wanted, I didn't know before we took a vote or closed the public hearing, if Commissioner Hayden would like me to address some of his, his comments and concerns. Because I have a lot of good answer to the, answers to those. And, and I'd like to, you know, I want to earn his support and want to make sure that, you know, you know, we're all supportive here and, and move forward together.
Mr. Hayden, do you have anything, any priority there that you'd like addressed?
No, you can address everything I talked about if you can. I mean, the, obviously, the way, the discharge permit has been taken care of. And that was, that was more technicality on that. It was, you know, do we wait, do we wait to make a vote until they have it? Or, you know, is it all right to vote ahead of time?
I'm familiar with that whole process, so no problem there.
That's kind of why I focused on you on that one.
That's okay, I'm good.
So, so there's a couple of things, Mr. Hayden, that you brought up. And, you know, one is about the asbestos containing material that, you know, Pulte, you know, made a mistake or should have known it was there. I can assure you that the asbestos containing material that is in the pile is not the orange bird pipe and associated with the steam tunnels that everybody knew that was there. Those steam tunnels were known to be there. We, everybody knew it, our LSPs knew it and, and everything was properly abated. What is in the pile, which is what the town's LSPs did not know and is what our LSPs did not know at each of the purposes. And that's when in 2007, in 2008, the, the existing buildings were dumped, were abated and demolished. And, and there was a pile of building debris that was buried on the site. And it was not located near any of the steam tunnels. It was not located near any of the existing buildings where you, you might have considered that they might be there. It was buried in the middle of the site where nobody would have any idea that it was there. And when we dug it up and put it in the pile, we, it contaminated the whole pile. And there was no way that we missed it. And there's no way that we had any idea during our diligence that it was, that it would have, could have been there.
Mark, can I interrupt you for one minute? Was that when the state did the abatement that that happened?
Correct.
Okay. Because the town did some as well, but I think it was the state that really, that, my understanding was, I just wanted you to confirm that. Because my understanding was it was when the state did their abatement that somebody did that.
That's right. So when we made, so during the RFP process, we did, we made a $30 million offer for an age restricted community. And we made a, I think it was an $18 million offer for a 4DR, which involved 20% affordable housing. And also it would have been non-age restricted. So they were two completely separate projects. And, and the town chose the $30 million, you know, offer. And, and that's in the past. I mean, so, you know, I, it's a good, it was a good deal for both of us. Unfortunately, it turned out not to be a good deal for us because of the asbestos containing material that was there. And that was never planned and there was no way to have known. But, you know, but that was in the past. And I think the town is happy with their choice. And, you know, we're, we're very happy building Martin's Landing and being a part of North Reading. Now, this permit modification involves an additional 52 units. And, you know, and, and so we're offering a 15% affordable housing, which, you know, is more than the 10% that, you know, the, the state is, is mandating all the towns you comply with. So, you know, to us, it, it seemed like a win-win for both the town and for us. So we, you know, we were able to provide the town some affordable housing. And the town was able to get some affordable housing that, that you don't have. And, and actually a little bit more than the 10% that's required by the state. So, you know, that, that was, that was, I think that's a real mutual, you know, benefit there. As far as the parking, the parking that's out there is for the three buildings that are currently occupied. So every time we build an additional building, we, we complete the project further in phases. And so every time we build another parking area, another building, an additional parking area gets built. That's sufficient for the additional buildings. So my point is, is that, first of all, there, there is no, there is no parking issue out there. And yeah, not all 50 residents of one building can park next to the front door. That's, that's not realistic. But there's plenty of parking for every, you, every resident in that building to park within, with a, with, with an acceptable parking space that's been provided for them. But, but that's, but that's today. But the point is, is that as we build additional buildings, these future homeowners are not stealing parking spaces from the building across the, the community. They're going to be parking in the parking lot that's provided for them, which, which we've designed that every building has sufficient parking right in their prox, proximate location. So I, I think that, I think that's an important point to make. As far as the elevator, we did have an elevator, an elevator problem when we opened up building four. I said it at the last meeting, I'll say it again today. So when we opened up building four in December, we had some issues with the elevator. Pulte Homes had some issues with the elevator. It was a construction problem. It happens, I guess it's how you respond to it. And Pulte Homes has responded to it very professionally and very professionally. It is, is, is good as possibly a company could do to rectify the situation in, as fast of the time as possible. And as of the, as of today, the elevator is working as it should be. And actually, the building at the recommendation of the building official, we contacted the state elevator office to review the elevator records. It's a Schindler elevator. And the state elevator office responded back to both us and the building official saying that Schindler has responded very appropriately to all of the, all of the issues. And that they would not recommend any additional action and that everything is being done the way it should be. So I, I hope the elevator issues are beyond us. But I can assure you that Pulte Homes is addressing it and has, in, in a professional manner. As far as the water, you mentioned, Dan Cofflin is here and he submitted a very detailed memorandum on both the, the water for plastic purpose, the water pressure wise at the top floors, and also the water for firefighting purposes. And, and it's in our opinion that there is plenty of water today to service all of the buildings there and not affect the buildings there. And, and, you know, knows that the town is currently undertaking a huge, you know, water improvement project that is slated to be done and completed this year, which will only significantly improve the water system at this entire side of town. But even without that, you know, we still have submitted an engineering memo from our professional that we believe there's enough water and that will pass all of the tests. And, and I, and I say that also with, at the zoning board of appeals hearing, the public safety and the water system was actually one of the biggest topics that was discussed. And, and they're not here tonight, but the town engineer, Mark, I'm blanking on his last name, Clark.
Clark.
And Deputy Chief Galvin and the Fire Chief were all there. And they spoke, they spoke at length and answered a dozen questions from all of the ZBA members about um, the sufficiency of the water system, the sufficiency of public safety. And in each and every time, they had no concerns with public safety of the five-story buildings or the um, the water system. And um, and that's and also part of that coordination with the fire department is where the the rear walkways around the buildings came from. So they actually, the fire department drove their fire, their ladder trucks out to the site. And they went around to each of the buildings with their ladder truck to show that they could access a fifth story very easily for public safety because that was one of the the questions. Um, but what they realized is they didn't have great ac- access to the rear. So Deputy Chief Galvin called me and asked me and said, what can you do to get me access to the rear where I can put my ladders down and get up to the top floor? And, you know, we worked to update the site plan to add the rear walkways to the six future buildings at at Martin's Landing where we haven't built yet. And he was very pleased and very appreciative. And we see this as a as a significant benefit to the project as part of the um, and then the last, you brought up the groundwater discharge permit. So Dan, again, Dan Coughlin submitted a very thorough memo reviewing the system today and how it's designed and how all of the components of the system, you know, we believe can can accommodate the extra. But certainly, you know, we we have to, um, if we were successful at the local level, you know, we have to go to the DEP and and submit, you know, our plans and our calculations to the DEP and they, you know, and and once they find it sufficient and and agree with us that they would issue an amended groundwater discharge permit. And and that process takes some time. And and that's really why you why we wouldn't go there before the local approvals because it would be sort of a waste of time to to do that. And, yeah, I did, you know, it's pretty, I think it's pretty administrative going to the DEP because all of our engineering shows that it it works, but you have to go through that process. So I think I hit everything and um, you know, I can expand expand upon any of it, but um, I really would appreciate your support and and I and I and I hope I hope I was able to uh, address some of your questions and concerns.
Okay.
May I, um?
Hey, Mark, thank you. Go ahead, Danielle.
Um, so I just, um, I just, and I think this is just to close the loop. There had been a February sixteenth uh, hearing that we didn't have um, uh, people to attend, um, because there was a continuance based on the ZBA. But I realized there had been a little bit of correspondence in that meeting folder. And I just, um, this is more a question to the CPC. I just wanted to be sure that you had seen all the correspondence. Um, one of the pieces had been, and I I I think Mister Mastriani just referred to it. Um, uh, there had been some feedback from the the state fire marshal, I think, um, regarding the 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 water pressure. And I just, I just wanted to be sure that that was something that you had seen before. I realized when we have a meeting and I give you correspondence, if we then don't address that issue, I don't know if you've seen it, but I just want to be, I just wanted to bring it to your attention in case you hadn't.
I think that's one of the reasons that the ZBA asked so many questions because they saw that correspondence.
Okay.
And that and that keyed them into a possible problem. And so they asked a lot of extra questions concerning that that particular item. So because I do remember that, I do remember reading that. But I do know that they addressed it rather completely at that meeting, so.
Mister Chairman, can I just ask Mark a question?
Yes, go ahead, Dan.
Did the fire department or really it's more building code, but did did they ask you or have you done a survey for a BDA? Is there a BDA requirement in the existing units or the new units?
Yeah, all of the buildings have a BDA up on up on the roof and.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Right. Okay.
Forgive me for asking a potentially a novice question. But if I understand that location well enough, there's a lot of heavy machinery traffic along that that route, especially between where Martin's Landing is and the highway. Is there any danger that we should foresee with higher density and emergency services being limited by heavy construction vehicles within that sixty-two corridor, especially between the highway and where emergency services might come from? I'm I'm just thinking that um, I've driven that road many times myself, uh, and it seems often be held up by uh, the heavy construction, um, the um, gravel trucks and whatnot. It seems like if you have a um, a senior, primarily senior center with potentially more emergency services necessary conjunction with heavy traffic, heavy construction traffic. Is there any mitigation to to that kind of, I mean, I'm just thinking out loud here, but forgive me for being new to the group. But that's the thing that comes to mind for me.
Uh, Mark, you want to answer? I mean, I have, I can give him part of an answer on that because they just basically repaved that whole road. And it's uh, or that section right there anyway, in front across from the pits and all. And it's pretty.
Yeah, I I don't have a, I don't have a good answer. Um, honestly, I just know that the, you know, the the police department and the fire department have been heavily involved in this process and and didn't have any concerns of of public safety or emergency uh, response time. Um, you know, I do have a Bob, though I do see is here. He's a very experienced traffic engineer, well-respected. And I don't know if, you know, he had a better answer than I would, not to put you on the spot, but um, you know.
Uh, Mister Chair Members, Bob Micho with MDM, we we looked at the safety characteristics uh, throughout the initial permitting for the project and more currently and um, find no uh, inability to properly serve the the property for emergency response purposes. Um, and as it relates to um, the number of incidents that might occur at the facility, but several active buildings at this point uh, that provide a good representation of what kind of emergency response activity might occur over time there. And I, to my knowledge, uh, and Mark, you you're the one that, you know, uh, knows this place best. I don't believe that there's any been any substantial uh, emergency response activity for those residents have been living there for for the past months. So I I find no evidence that would suggest that there's going to be a problem getting to from or within uh, this particular property. And I I don't think that the history of the the residents who are there now would suggest that there's any greater level of um, that type of activity relative to a typical residential development.
Okay, um, any other questions or comments? Okay, then I'm going to actually close the public hearing and um, and we can move on to looking at that conditional approval. Do you uh, you have that Ryan, that motion? You're muted, I think. Are you, we can't hear you. Nope.
No, technical.
Actually just emailed Ryan a revised motion because I realized it didn't have all the components, so.
Okay.
Oh, I still can't hear you.
Yeah, we can't hear you, Ryan. Whatever was wrong before is wrong again.
I didn't. Hello?
There you go.
There you go.
Just turn it off and turn it back on. Works every time. Uh, Mister Chairman, I move the Community Planning Commission vote to approve the application for priority development site master permit and parking special permit plan entitled Site Plan for Martin's Landing, Multifamily Housing Community, One-O-Four Lowell Road, North Reading, Massachusetts, dated March ninth, twenty twenty-one, drawn by Civil Design Group LLC, subject to the terms and conditions of the Certificate of Conditional Approval dated March sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, as amended this evening. A second there, Mister Chairman.
Okay, I have a motion by Mister Carroll and a second by Mister Rudolph. Any further questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
I think we just need a roll call vote.
Pardon?
I think we just need a roll call vote because it's.
Okay, we can do that. Okay, Mister Hayden.
I'm gonna hold off.
Okay, uh, Mister Rudolph.
Aye.
Mister Carroll.
Aye.
And myself will be aye. Mister Hayden.
Reluctantly, aye.
Okay. Well, I mean, okay, so there's your four votes.
Thank you. You need to call Jeremiah. Don't forget, Mister.
Jeremiah is going to abstain, I believe. Is that correct, sir?
You gotta give him the chance.
Jeremiah, he abstains. Yeah, I I was not totally thrilled with with changing the uh, the the um, with uh, changing the bylaw because we did it for a reason, but um, I understand the question. I understand the the reasoning and everything. And I think that perhaps, I think the good in this case, you know, kind of outweighs the bad. So I think that's why we're willing to move along with it, but um, um, and getting the affordable in there is also, I think, an important point for us. I mean, I think that was um, one of the things that moved everybody along a little. So just for future thought.
I I wasn't against the affordable. It was just interesting. What happened there?
There's a lot. There was a lot. I mean, I I would have preferred to see it stay. Uh, but again, it's there's 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 a reason here. The state code allows it now, which it didn't before. And so we have some positives in it. And um, and hopefully it'll all work out well. I think that one of the things that really also, you know, just for the record, so you'll understand some of our thinking, Mark, as you go forward.
Sure.
Um, is um, I think that the two elevators, to me, was a very important thing, considering the fact that you're going to have fifty-five hundred people there. And that also was what brought the question about where are you going to put the affordable because you'll likely have less, a more handicapped or a less capable person in these affordable units. And so having them interspersed in the low levels as well, I think was important, but the dual elevators help a lot as well. Okay, that's some of the thoughts. Okay, um, if that's, uh, nobody else has any comments on that, there's your vote. Um, and the best of luck to you. Please uh, go forward carefully.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Right. Okay. So our, um, next public, continue public hearing is the one-ten, one-twenty-four Main Street. And uh, I see Andy Street here. You are, you are up, sir.
I'm here. Thank you, Mister Chairman, Andy Street, Civil Design Consultants, um, here on behalf of the owners and the applicant, um, well, it's RE, CR Realty, um, but you guys probably know it as Reading Lumber. Um, I should say, Civil Design Consultants, not to be confused with Civil Design Group, who was just here before, but um, if I can share my screen, Mister Chairman.
Go ahead.
This is a, is a quick, I'm I'm really here. I'll just say it upfront. I'm really here more as an update. Um, this is the same plan you saw last time. Um, but just as a quick refresher uh, for the commission, uh, this is the Reading Lumber site. Um, the area we're talking about is accessed by the driveway. If you're standing at the street to the to the right of the building, to the driveway.
Excuse me, Andy, just for a moment. Danielle, I I have a sign saying we are, we have two people entered the waiting room. Is that something that we should uh, deal with?
I think you'll need to let them in as the host. And then if you want, you can make me the host back again and I can be in charge of those.
Okay, so what do I do? A quick view?
Um, you can click. Are you getting a a little choice to admit?
No, not.
Okay. Um, but it says so-and-so has entered the waiting room.
It says two people entered the waiting room. I have a choice to view.
Um, go to, I can't view it now because it's not on my screen anymore. Um, uh,
You might have to undo a screen share in order for me to get at, well, wait a minute.
Up to the top. Do you have a little bar? What does the bar say at the top?
It says, uh, two people entered the waiting room. View or XXX, that's it.
Click on that.
Click on view. Click on view.
Okay, they click on view. All right. Brad Latham and Colin User Two. That would be you probably, though.
Um, I don't think I'm on that call anymore.
Okay.
Admit them both.
Yeah, I would admit both.
Okay, so it's okay.
And then if you want, at the top, where my screen is, if you can go to the very top right-hand corner where the three dots are, you can click on that and make me the host again. And then I can just worry about that.
Okay, I don't have that on my screen.
Am I on your screen?
Not right now because.
Andy, Andy, unshare your screen, Andy. Just for now. There you go. Just to get through, get through this little technical issue.
Problem, no problem.
Okay, I see the little thing. Okay, and now I'm, I clicked on that. I'm gonna make host, okay?
Yes.
There you go. You want to change host to Danielle?
Oh.
Yes, I do. Hang on, I got it.
I'm the host. Okay, great. It worked.
You're the host now, Danielle.
Okay.
All right, Andy, I think you're up again. You can do it.
By the time I got the hang of this, it'll all be over, right?
Yeah. We're all learning.
Yeah.
All right.
Um, I I I think I left off with these, the area we're talking about, this Reading Lumber site, um, there's a driveway to the right of the building, uh, Winter Street, kind of just behind that driveway, more or less. As you come down the driveway to the right, there's two storage sheds today, right, right on the right-hand side. One of the existing short storage sheds, uh, shown in this blue line here, they would like to to tear down and rebuild a new one, uh, shown by the line in the red. Um, so we're here before this uh, commission for for site plan uh, approval and also for a floodplain special permit. The the floodplain line is this green dotted line at elevation seventy-six point five. So since we were here last, I I don't know, three, three weeks ago or so, I guess, um, we met with the Conservation Commission. We met with them on the tenth. We got very, it was pretty minimal discussion, to be honest, not not a lot of feedback from the commission. Um, there will be a site visit coming up on the twenty-seventh and the next meeting isn't until April. Um, my understanding of the the bylaws that they actually need to act uh, before this commission, so um, we're in a little bit of a holding pattern. We'll wait for the next meeting and sidewalk, but you just want to come here. Um, just to give an update, we'll be requesting continuance. Um, but uh, there's been some back and forth. Um, I've spoken with Danielle a few times. I've spoken to uh, the building commissioner a couple of times. Um, trying to, I I think kind of the crux of what we're trying to sort out is is this slab elevation. Um, today, it's it's about a foot below the floodplain. Um, and the plane you're looking at has the slab at the same elevation. So the the bylaw reads, we should be a foot above this, the floodplain. Um, we'd like to be at the same elevation. Raising it would cause more disturbance in the floodplain and in the conservation buffer zones here. Um, it's it's something we can do, um, but we're just trying to work through it. And and as of, I think it was today, maybe yesterday, uh, building commissioner weighed in and and I think his words, I don't want to misquote. I do have his email here, but um, he 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 believes that the uh, what does he say? The concrete floor.
What he said was that the floor is a finished product and needs to be above the level.
Yes, so so therefore it needs to be elevated above the the floodplain. I I I'm not, I I've asked for some clarification. I'm not sure if I fully understand that assessment, but um, that's kind of where we're at. Um, as I said, we're mentioning, uh, we're requesting continuance here while we wait for conservation to their next meeting. But if there's any additional feedback from this commission, we'd certainly uh, welcome that as we kind of, as we kind of move forward here.
I think, Andy, that what what if it was a dirt floor, you know, then it would be, then it then it could probably be at the elevation you wanted at. But because it's a poured concrete finished floor, finished product, then that it that that trips the trigger for it to be uh, above the flood elevation. And I think that was the building inspectors, that's the building commissioner's uh, um, opinion. And that's how we came down on it.
Sure.
Andy. But sorry, sorry, Mister Chairman. Um, so Andy, are you, you're 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 demolishing the existing slab though, right? In order to build this, you're not just gonna cut spread footings and put up columns and the frost wall and stuff. You're actually getting rid of that slab. It's just you want to stay at that elevation?
That that's my understanding, yeah. And if if that matters, I'm sure we could have that discussion. Uh,
No.
But that's your intention.
And uh, sorry to cut you. It, I I think I'm just, I'm looking at the construction. I saw Jerry's uh, email, but if you're already doing a four-foot kick wall, which is most likely an eight-foot wall, so it's four feet below the ground, you know, it's a a form thing, but it's, it's a four-foot kick wall above ground. Why can't you just elevate your slab the one foot? Now you'll only have, you know.
Three foot on the inside.
Well, actually, the answer to that, I can help you with that. Well, actually, Dan, the answer to that, I can help you with that. The problem is the whole thing's in the floodplain. And, and that, and that extra, uh, X by X by how many feet? By two feet? Is that much more floodplain that you're taking away that you need replication for?
Right, so, so the, the answer is we can, we can do that, we can make the site work. I, I guess, and I'm not, I'm not necessarily arguing about this, I, I just, to me, that would mean there's more, as the chair just said, there's more disturbance in the floodplain. Um, there's more compensation that needs to be provided, which again, we can do. You know, more pavement will need to be disturbed. It, it, I think it, it makes the site a little less accessible, to be honest, and I know that's not necessarily this commission's problem, but I think the site in general is kind of works better. It's, um, um, just less disturbance overall in the resource areas. Part of my fear is I'm gonna wind up in a little bit of a a circle with conservation, because if I'm on the conservation, I don't want to put words in their mouth. But if I'm on the Conservation Commission, they would likely want less disturbance in the floodplain and the buffer zone. And I'm gonna come in with a plan that goes more disturbed. You know, you know what I mean? I could send some back, see some back and forth there. But the, the short answer is we could. We can raise that slab to meet the reg. Um, I, I, I just really want an understanding of, of why, I guess, I, that, that was kind of where I'm at with, uh, the building commission.
I believe the building commission is gonna be, uh, he's, he's, he's gonna be tied to the, to the, to the bylaw, to the rule that he has. So, um, and I'm not sure if you can get the variance from the Board of Appeals on that. Um, but I, but I, um, but I also see that in order, if, when you leave it at that low level, you've got to do some serious flood mitigation in the back of the building, so that when the waters come up, they flow through the building and back out onto the ground. I mean, it's
Sure.
At that, that extra work and extra expense there kind of, um, I think probably balances the numbers off. Um, but the real question then becomes more of one of getting access to the building and, and having to fill in, because it's not just, right now, so everybody understands, right now, it's not just the filling in of the inside of the building with that extra foot or two feet of material. It's the fact that now you're gonna build up still in the floodplain, you're gonna build up the area where the driveways are, and alongside of the building, you gotta build all those up, that's even more disturbance, even more filling of the floodplain, and even more replication at one and a half.
Oh.
Well, I understand what your problem is, Andy.
Okay, yeah, yeah, and again, we, we can do it, we can make it all work, it just, uh, you know, we just kind of make sure we're tackling this the right way, I guess, and, uh, the most effective way for, for everyone who's interested. This, this seems to trip, um, uh, everybody. Conservation Planning Commission has some building implications, a lot going on for a, uh,
Very simple thing.
A lumber storage yard, yeah.
Right, right, right. So, Warren.
Yep.
This is just, this is just a query, it's not, not, not much. The proposed building won't touch that existing building, is that correct? There's just gonna be enough room to build it in between the two walls? Or are they gonna build it from the inside?
They will butt up against each other, but.
New building.
Yeah.
So they'll each have their own, their own wall there, so they'll have, it'll be.
Yeah.
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 Yeah. Yeah.
Pierce, I'm sure how they're gonna put that wall on up against the other building.
That's, that's kind of the question, Warren. They gotta maybe prefab it and then hang it.
Maybe they got a real skinny copper though.
Hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, we hear you now.
Sorry, I'm trying to test my microphone every, over here, I don't think I can hear you. Can I ask a quick question, Jared?
Yeah, please.
With regards to, uh, Jerry's email, he's referring to the floor as a finished product.
Yes.
Strikes me as kind of strange wording. Where was the, the finished driven from? Because I've never seen uh, anytime you see a finished floor referred to, it's usually referred to as finished space, like occupiable finished space, whereas this seems to be referring to, I guess that it's a, a product of construction versus just earth? Which I, I've never seen finished referred to such. I, I just, the interpretation just seems strange, because essentially we're talking about a shed. And because, because they're gonna pour concrete on the bottom of the shed, it's finished space?
Uh, Ryan, that is pretty common, and, and I do a lot of warehouse, it's FFB, finished floor elevation, that's pretty much most warehouses, distribution centers, whatever, whether at dock height
Or, no, I heard like above finished floor as a reference for outlet or whatever else. Floor, but when we're referring to a, something in the floodplain as a finished space, like if this was a, if this was a home, would it be, would the basement be a finished space? It was just gonna be the, the foundation? Like a crawl space under a, a home, residential home, you'd refer to that as finished space because it had a concrete floor?
Yeah, they wouldn't put a concrete floor in that, they wouldn't allow it. They put, they put, uh.
No, you could have a poured, you could have a poured crawl space.
Not in a floodplain, though. They wouldn't do it in a floodplain.
Well, they wouldn't put the building on the floodplain, so.
I'm just curious, so where is the, where is the, like, the, I, I remember Danielle referencing it before, that finished, like, you're trying to attain whether or not it was considered a finished, what the finished elevation was in the space. What, what are we referencing with that, with that verbiage?
Uh, the fact that it's a poured concrete and that it's been finished.
No, I mean, what, 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 uh?
Well, in other words, I, I think that Jerry's take on it was that when it was done, you could at some point in the future, put an office in there because it's a finished floor. In other words, once it's done and it's a shed and you walk away, then what?
Ryan, do you mean what's the significance of it being finished?
I recall you referencing some document that, that was part of the qualification we were trying to answer.
It's the standard he's looking for.
It's the bylaw, um, it's the flood, it's the flood plain district special permit bylaw, so, um, there are five criteria that the CP has CP has to make sure the project meets before it can issue an approval. Um, and that is, um, and one of them has to do with finished floor area, and so I was, um, I was confused about that language in our bylaw, and I, that's why I had reached out to, uh, DCR, who oversees all of the municipal bylaws, because all towns are required to have basically the same language. Um, and they confirmed that if it's, if the building inspector considers the floor to be finished floor, it has to be a foot above the, the base flood elevation.
Right.
And I, I talked to Jerry a little bit in terms of trying to get some clarity, for my, for my own knowledge, I don't really know what's considered finished and what's not, um. And he was kind of explaining to me that, like, the difference between, like, a dirt floor, anytime that something has been graded smooth and finished off, it's not so much the type of flooring, but, but he would consider a cement floor to to, to be that.
Okay.
So, I guess that's.
That you could in the future, um, actually put an office or a bathroom or anything in there because the floor is finished. You have, you have. And so you, but you couldn't, you know, and, and, um.
Or conversely, you could not finish it now and pour later and have a finished floor too.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could.
So if this was a gravel floor, does that, does that mitigate, does that alleviate the problem?
Yes, if it had a gravel floor at the original elevation, yeah.
Who would have thought? What's, what's kind of.
He's gonna have footings and poured frost walls and four-foot knee walls.
I guess a, a couple of things. I mean, they'd need a building permit for the office, right? And then they get denied.
Yeah, one would, uh, one would assume.
That doesn't mean they do it all the time, Andy.
Well, yeah, well, there's.
They wouldn't be just a desk put up against the wall.
Yeah, right, right.
Because now you're using it as a finished space, even though it's just a desk and a chair.
Right.
Or even a little writing platform and a, and a stool.
Right.
You know, you, you're using it as a finished site.
I think the intention of this building, just to back up, just from the presentation last week, or was it the week before? I can't keep track, but was, it's just gonna be a larger storage shed. But, uh, but Warren, you, you raise a good point, so I'm wondering if you can, if you can leave it stone or leave it, let's just say, pervious, um, you know, so whether it's grasscrete or some of the other products that they have, so it'd be a permeable floor, I'm just wondering if that gets around it. The other, the other thing, I, I'd recommend, Andy, obviously, talk to the, the structural, but you could probably accomplish this with just, uh, grade beams. Um, you know, what, what's the width of that building?
Uh, sixty, I believe, I believe it's.
Yeah, I mean, somewhere on twelves or whatever. And then you just pour a structural slab over, so essentially you just have these long runs of of, of, of wall that are basically up, um, one foot, if you will, um, even less. And, and then they would just have the slab topping over them, so the, the slab's supported by the grade beams, but essentially the grade would stay the same level as it is. Uh, so there would be no mitigation, and you would, uh, you know, and water could run through and under the facility or under the building too, help those same, uh, doors.
Right, okay, yeah, it's certainly something we can, uh, I'll, I'll pass it along.
I saw one of those in Brunswick, Maine, and, and it, it was a warehouse in the, and it's, uh, you know, much bigger, but that's how they did it.
Yeah, so what you're talking about is, is putting beams down and then, then putting the steel mesh over it and pouring a wall, a floor that's supported by the beam, so that the original floor elevation stays the same, it's still a dirt floor under the beams, underneath the floor.
Right, so if they're just running saying the direction of the arrow there, they'd be running along that.
Even better example for you, go to, go out to the main road in, in North Reading to China Cuisine, look at the building out behind there.
Is it similar?
No, it's, 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 uh, it's a total feed-through, uh, foundation.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's far, there's, it's, it's built in, water flows underneath it, just, you know, the minimum amount of disturbance, just whatever the footings were to hold the building up, above the water.
The only problem with that building is they use cement block, which is porous, and, and they get wet and they blow off the paint all the time, they can't waterproof it. So do it with poured concrete, if you do that.
Yeah, so I mean, your, 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 your point is well taken, Dave, I'm not sure that they would, uh, that you could get all that to the Conservation Commission and have them understand what it is you're doing, you know what I mean?
Right, yeah.
Without, and then you'd have to have a fairly well-drawn engineered plan with all the explanations and.
Yeah, right, right, right. Okay.
But you'd have less excavation if you, if you do drilled, you know, drilled tubes, and that's, that's how you support these grade beams that get you up. I mean, then you're only just drilling around the perimeter. You're actually not
Excavating.
Doing the big trench that you'd need for a frost wall and spread footing. So it's, uh, it's got its advantages, you're just augering, boring, and then setting the.
Yeah.
What kind of. Andy, you know what a grade beam is? I'm just talking, in this case, it'd be maybe uh, one foot by one foot with rebar in it, that's it. You know, we're not talking about, uh, this giant, what typically are four-foot high or so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you probably would want to do two thirty footers and set them.
Right. Right.
End to end, yeah.
Yeah, oh, we'll kick that around. Yeah, okay. If, if I might, Mr. Chair, can I ask one quick question? You, you mentioned the, um, ZBA, so relief from the bylaw would come from the ZBA, I think, I don't know, you mentioned that.
Dispute with the building inspector, you'd go to the Board of Appeals.
Okay, and so, so the, the permit for the floodplain comes from this commission, right? So, so this commission, in theory, would have the authority to waive that, but then we'd wind up trying to get a building permit and have some trouble. If I could convince you to waive it, is that, is that, I just want to make sure I understand, because if the ZBA needs to get involved, that, that kind of might change the dynamic and where we put our efforts to, because that's a whole nother board and more time and all that kind of thing. So I just want to make sure I understand process, I think.
Well, we have to, we have to, without, without, uh, any variance, we would have to stick to the bylaw.
Okay, okay, okay. All right, no, that's good to know. All right, well, um, yeah, no, yeah, this, this is good feedback, um, you know, we'll, um, I'm not quite sure where we turn next. We probably will, if we tweak the plan, it'll go, wind up, when does this commission meet next? Is it before?
Two weeks.
In two weeks. Okay, so it would meet before that, so we'll have to talk about whether we modify the plan, represent it to you, we'll, we'll figure out the timing of how we, of how we move forward, but, um, we'll stay in touch with Danielle as we go.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, uh, so this is a public hearing, it's a continued public hearing, so if there's, uh, if you could, uh, close down your screen share, please, so we can see if there's any other comments or questions from the, uh, public before we continue this. So if there are any questions or comments from the public, please let me know now. I do not see any. Okay, so we're gonna continue this, Danielle, to.
Um, April sixth, does, does that date work for now? If you find you need more time, you can always request a further continuance.
Sure, you know, that'd be great, thank you.
Okay, why don't we continue it till eight PM? Uh, sorry, no, we have two zoning hearings that night, so why don't we say, um, you wanna do this at seven thirty?
I suppose we can do that, yeah.
Yeah, do that one.
We may not be able to finish even, so.
Okay.
So let's, let's see where we're at, and at seven thirty, see if we can move it along.
Okay.
Just get aside your information to us on time, Andy, so we can review it, so we, we have our, we're ready to go with it.
Sure, absolutely.
I just.
You've done a good job, so.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Good one question, um, when I had initially talked with, um, a conservation agent about the project, I had some questions about the flood zone, and she had mentioned she thought it would be helpful to have a peer review done for the floodplain issues, and I think it's possible the Conservation Commission might need that more than we need that. Um, it seems as though we've been able to get the guidance we need. I, I asked DCI for a quote, which I haven't yet received, but are you, um, I mean, it, it's up to you whether you think we are in need of a peer review or not. If not, I suppose we could have the Conserva- Conservation Commission get the help that they need.
Are you sure that that's in floodplain?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, because I know that, you know, sometimes the, uh, the floodplain maps show things that are in floodplain, but that a tight engineering, um, uh, survey will show that perhaps not, so.
Yeah, the, the elevation.
You're sure you're in it, then that's that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's not a little, it's a lot of it. It's like ninety percent of the building, am I right, Andy?
Yeah, it's, it's pretty substantial.
Yeah.
Okay.
Nothing I can't fix with a quick line change, but.
Yeah, well. Remember, we go out there with a satellite GPS, you can find out how high you are, right?
Yeah.
Pretty quick.
So do you, uh, do we need a motion to, uh, continue this, or are we still in the timeframe?
Still in the timeframe, I mean, you, yeah, we can, we're fine to continue it till April sixth, that's seven thirty, if that's.
Do we need a motion for that right now?
Um, I think we have one.
No, I, Mr. Carroll can so move it, you just said it all.
Oh, yes.
Do, Mr. Pierce, I move the committee, the committee commission vote to grant the request of continuance for the public hearing for one ten, one twenty-four Main Street until Tuesday, April sixth at seven thirty PM.
Second.
Okay, a motion of second, and any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Yes, you can vote on this one, Jeremiah, thank you.
Great.
Because you've heard the whole thing.
All right.
All right.
Good night, everybody, thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
Yes, thank you, Andy. Okay.
Hey, Ryan, don't mute yourself anymore.
I'm not, I'm done with it. I'm just gonna hold my hand over the mic.
Oh.
Hey.
All right. Okay, um, I think we're all set, I think I covered everything tonight, I believe that's where we're there.
Yeah.
So I guess I just wanted to ask you where we'd like to go next with the five G discussion. Do we want to continue?
Oh, yeah, we gotta talk.
Kind of hammer that out, um, tonight, do you want to do it next time? Do you want, do you want me to try to find a separate meeting time and we can just talk about it then? I mean.
Yeah, I'd like to throw it under the bus.
Yeah. Actually, Danielle, I tried, I tried to look at the FCC, um, full document, and there was nothing to download, so it has gone away.
It's big. I can send you the link if that's helpful.
That, that's something, because I mean, I tried to do it on a computer, it's just not there. It says, it says it doesn't, it's not there, so.
Yeah, it says it's not there when you try to download it.
Okay, I wonder if it wasn't successfully uploaded even.
It was not successfully uploaded, yes. But you can get it. You can get it from the FCC. But, but, but the thing is, it's, it, 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 there's really nothing in there, Chris, that changes what we do. In other words, all it does is.
Oh, I know.
To do this.
I know, I know. It's, it's worse than when they came out with the cell towers. Yeah. I mean, when the cell towers came out, they said you, you had to let them in, but you could regulate them and you could do it the way you wanted to, as long as you got coverage.
And then, and then what is it, ninety-four or something? They, they stiffened the rules up dramatically, so you couldn't regulate it as much as you used to be able to.
Yeah, and, and it's because the towns weren't letting them in. They were, they were over regulating them. So they put their foot down, says, we gotta have this stuff. And now it's so loosey goosey, it's killing us. For the towns that were good and allowed it and, and made it work, you know? It's, it's, it's.
This is, this is, um, this is onerous. This, this is really heavy duty, this five G thing.
Well, they, I think the people who, uh, that did it don't understand what it all entails.
I think they, the, uh, people that are fans of the heights of the speed and all that, and, and the advantages of it don't realize what they got, you know, what kind of, what's necessary to make it work. I mean.
Yeah.
You know, you obviously, you have to, I mean, three, three hundred feet in any direction.
It's a football field. It's a football field.
How are you gonna do that? I mean, and, you know, because it's in North Reading, it's gonna be very difficult. But if you go to the city, not so much, because there's so many buildings, there's so many places to put antennas that you could, that, you know, on top of the buildings where you could hide a, a, um.
Put them on the side of the building.
A, a, an equipment cabinet and not, nobody even see it, you know?
Right.
So, but that's not going to be the case when you got single family homes five hundred feet apart.
Right. So, hey Danielle, when you were looking at the Burlington, um, I was looking at that Burlington one and they, they've got those, you know, they show you their original antique street light with all the junk on it. And then they show you another light, but they don't give you any sizes of that other light. Is there a way to get some technical information? Cause.
That's just a, that's just a, an illustration. That's not.
Yeah, you know, I don't want to get caught with a, with the, uh, branches on a, you know, a cell tower.
Yeah, that's a, that's just an illustration, Chris. That doesn't actually represent what it would really look like.
Yeah.
In their guidelines, there are some of those specifications, like it has to be.
Thirty-eight cubic feet.
At least, yeah, the twenty-eight cubic feet is a limit. And that actually, I saw that in RMLD's regulations too. Um, and then Burlington was also saying everything has to be, it has to be at least ten feet up off the ground. But then they have an upper height limit depending on what type of facility it is. Um, I think it was a thirty-five foot limit for poles, um.
Yeah, it sounded about right, yeah.
Or no more than an increase of ten percent among like poles within a, you know, certain hundred feet radius. The, the problem with filling in what the blanks are, these are the blanks that KP has left in what we're supposed to fill in. And I have no way of knowing, okay, blank diameter pole. I don't know how wide a diameter pole this requires. So I can't say it should be five inches or twenty inches. I don't know.
Cause nobody's done it.
That's the reason that I want to see somebody else do it, so we can go take a look at their pole and measure it, see how big a diameter it is. But I, but I believe. I believe that you can, um, I believe you can get that answer without too much trouble going online to find out what the equipment, what five, the five G equipment looks like or what's available from the companies. Not that you want to go see Huawei, but one of the others maybe.
Right. I mean, so far, so Burlington has a lot of dimensions already. And I've, I've started to note down which blanks I think we can fill in if we wanted to plug in what Burlington has done. I might be able to look through to see like if Boston has, you know, required pole diameters. I've already asked KP this question, like, do we have minimum specifications that we have to allow based on what these companies need? And they didn't have them, so. I mean, we can do our best to copy other towns. It's just.
Well, I think one of the things about this whole thing is also is it's, it's, it's very, it's, it's typical of new technologies. And that is that, you know, the first computer took up the size of a gymnasium and, and you can do that with a watch now. And so the, the question is, are we, are we going to be able to downsize some of this equipment as, as it becomes, you know, something that we're going to do? Can we start downsizing it so that it fits in a, a reasonable package on a, on a pole? But the other, but the other problem that occurs to me, and I mentioned before, is these things chew up a lot of power. So at some point, you've got to get power to that thing. So if all you have is enough power to power that light bulb on that pole, now you're going to start running wires uh, of some kind of some, some, some dimension to power these things up. And the only way you can run, either got to run big wires or tiny wires with high voltage. So, um, and then.
And transformers.
Then you can transform it down inside the pole to get to what you want or whatever. I mean, but there's, there's got to be, there's a whole lot more to it than just a little antenna up top there. There's, there's.
And, and, and they have to have batteries too, Warren. They gotta have backup.
Yeah.
Cause people want this.
Backup for the whole power system that, that, that is a backup power per street or something, you know?
Yes, they got to do something there too.
So many poles, a, a backup package of some kind.
Yep.
Because if they can, if they can limit the backup packages to one every thousand feet or something, at least the, the equipment on the pole won't have a huge battery pack that somebody's got to.
Right, right.
So, so the question is how it's, how it's done. You know, we don't really know how it's done yet. I mean, we got a little bit of an education before, but it was, yeah, I think it was lacking in, in some specifics that we needed. And, and it could be because those specifics, uh, don't really exist yet. That, that, everything's still in development. So, uh, we're kind of, uh, so, so I, so that's why I'm, I'm, I'm okay with come up with a bylaw that may be a little onerous. And then if we get challenged on it, we can, we can, you know, battle with it. Um, but by the same.
And relax.
Buy some time for somebody else to get this done and perhaps for some advancement in some of the technology. I don't know.
Why don't we do this? Um, our, our zoning hearings on April sixth are all things that we've had discussions about previously, and I'm guessing they're not going to be extremely long.
Nope.
Um, so why don't we plan to have our zoning hearings as scheduled at the next meeting on the sixth? We have, we'll have Reading lumber coming back in, but why don't we like devote an entire, just an hour to our meeting next time? And in that time between now and then, I'll just see, I'll, I'll just get as much as I can on what the more technical specifications are. And I'll just come up with some suggestions and we can just go through them.
Yeah.
Try that.
There are, there are, I know that there are places where they've already put the five G in places like China and places like that. I don't know that you can um, get pictures of that or what they did, or whether they even care if it's aesthetically pleasing or not. But if we could find someplace where there is a five G network operational then, and take a look at what they did, um, it would give us an idea of, of what it is, what it is we need to do. I mean, so I, I really, I just think, I just think we're, I just think the whole thing, we're, we're a little bit ahead of ourselves with the whole thing right now, is what I think.
Warren, I think the, uh, gentleman that spoke to us two weeks ago, um, nice, Ryan, um, he had, uh, they, Boston's doing some of the five G.
Yeah, I think it's.
And I think he's got some equipment that's in the field that we might be able to get pictures of.
Yeah, the dark red here is, is deployed Verizon.
Yeah.
So you can see where it's, it's, it's in test cases and, you know, small areas. But it's out there. It doesn't come really north.
Yeah, yeah. So we should take a look and see what they've, what, what it looks like. I mean, if, if it's there, let's see what it looks like. And, and, and it looks like Malden has some right there, right? So, so, um, so if Malden has some, they must have a bylaw.
Okay.
Why don't we cannibalize that? And, um, the, and they must have some pictures of what they, of what it all looks like. So let's, let's do that.
I'll go take some. That's just down the road.
That's in your neck of the woods. Go have a look.
Okay.
Call, call the, uh, planning administrator up over there and see if they'll give you a tour.
I think she knows them. Didn't, didn't we interview the person that's the planning administrator in Malden now?
Chair Pierce.
Is that that guy that we didn't take?
Yeah.
Anyway.
I hear someone.
I think that's our next, that's our next, uh, best thing.
Okay.
That way we'll have, that way we can actually see a picture of something. We can see what it looks like, what's actually working and how it all, how it's all done. You'll get an idea how big those cabinets need to be.
The cabinets are the one thing I actually know how big they need to be. It's, it's some of the other things. I think it's twenty-eight cubic feet. That seems to be consistent. Um, but I'll try to fill in the rest of the blanks.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then we'll just put the bylaw together and then we'll wait and see.
Go ahead.
Actually, Chair Pierce, I was gonna say that I, uh, I grew up in Malden. I still see my parents there like once a week. So I can even take a look for you if you want. Also, if we want an in-depth look, uh, Chair Kate Manypelli is the city solicitor of Malden. So if we need, maybe.
We need some help?
Get some internal documents or something.
I want on the ground pictures. Vincenzo, I want to see. I want pictures of the units with the antennas on. I want to see.
Yeah, let me see if I can get, uh, Ryan, did that map you showed go zoom in enough to show actual individual streets where they are?
Oh, yeah, there were streets on it, yeah.
They do. Okay. Cause I know, I mean, I grew up in Malden, so I know pretty much the entire city.
Yeah, so we just want to have a look at, at what they're actually doing, what's actually working, what, 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 what are the cap, what's the compartments look like? What does it look like?
Hey, you're right in there.
Zoom, you know, you're trying to get to the right place. You're in Revere right now. There's Everett. You're going to Revere.
Want to go until left.
There you go.
Go back a little bit to left.
That's west.
Yeah, go back to Malden.
There you go. There you go.
Hold that. And you want to scroll, scroll now up a little, scroll.
He's looking for his street.
Five G, scroll down.
The dark red is the five G.
Okay, so. My, I used to rent right there off Clifton. My mother-in-law lives on Hawthorne. So I'm going to be there tomorrow on Hawthorne Street.
Right in the neighborhood.
I'm gonna be right there tomorrow.
Good.
So I will, what am I looking for again? Boxes?
Well, you're looking for the light poles or whatever it is. They got the little antennas on.
Okay. Okay, that's off Cedar. And okay, I know exactly where that is. I mean, you know, it's a good thing, because there's a nice nursery school there. I bet you they were real happy about putting it there.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, I see where it is. So as you see right there where it says Elsie Street, that's where I rented. First apartment. So like, I, okay, I'll, I'll, I'll take a few photos and see how aesthetically pleasing it is. Let's put it like.
There you go. That, that's kind of what we're looking in. And what do they got on the street? You know, how many do they have?
Yeah, that's a lot right there. So you see that, wow, okay.
Oh, Metford's a lot.
Metford-Malden line right there. That's again where my pa- around where my parents live. Well, that's a, wow, I, I, I've never.
Well, it's right on the Fells Way.
And the, but the best part is that, like, they must be well-integrated, because I'm in Malden at least twice a week, and I've never even noticed them. Maybe there's just not enough of them yet.
Probably not.
On Broadway.
That's Arlington.
Arlington.
That's a lot. Oh, I see, I think I see my old street.
Wow, they got.
Yeah, they, well, they got to. You can't keep them out. That's the whole thing.
Yeah, so let, let's say, and let's check with these people to see what their bylaws look like.
Border Square.
Oh, they don't have one.
Maybe they do.
They, they might.
Yeah, so let's, let's plagiarize, plagiarize.
Absolutely. Well, with permission, Warren, with permission.
There's no sense reinventing the wheel and, and, and again, I, I'm hoping that as time goes on, that they, uh, that we get that, again, that technology, get, you know, that when they, when this becomes an important enough thing, that technology begins to control the sizing of it some, and we get something, uh, and I, and I, and, and the other thing about it is that if you can, one of the things that happens when you begin to miniaturize some of this stuff is the power requirement goes down.
Oh, yeah.
And that's, and that's another, I think, important point for these, for these things right now, so.
I'm gonna guess that they're not gonna put as many up as they say they're going to in those configurations until they can miniaturize it and reduce the power, because they're just gonna die with the power.
Yeah, well, they're gonna be, they're gonna have to be placed where there's enough density to support it too, so.
Yeah.
That's the other thing. Okay, so, uh, you can do that. We'll get that next meeting. We'll, we'll take a look at pictures and we'll finish off that bylaw.
Great, okay. So April sixth is an important meeting, so. Let me say April sixth.
Thanks, Ryan.
On your, uh, cross. Keep it, keep it on your schedule.
Does Debbie need any signatures from us?
And I was in there today. I took care of a few, so, uh, but just payroll stuff, so.
Yeah. I guess not. She's not unmuting.
Well, no bill, she had no bills today, so that's.
Okay. Yeah, you would have signed them.
Yeah, I would have, yeah, then I would have told you, so.
That's right.
Okay, then a good night, everybody. Thank you very much all for coming. Did you, you didn't have an update or something you wanted to do, did you? Danielle.
It's nothing urgent. It, it can all wait. It's, um.
Charles Street?
What's that?
Charles Street?
There's people building up there.
Yeah, they're moving.
Are they really?
Yeah.
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 Yeah. There is still, Dave Giangrande says there's still a small repair that needs to be made in a drain pipe, but it's, um, we're, we're working with the owner and it's, it'll get done. Um, which happened after the bond. So there's a small bit that's unbonded, unfortunately. To get it done. He said he would do it, so.
Yeah.
We always hate that.
They're moving. Um, I told you.
So. You know?
Um, I told you of a, oh, so, so at the last meeting that we would be designated a housing choice community. Unfortunately, when I looked at the building permit data carefully, we don't qualify. So probably next year, but, um, it, it turns out that the reporting to the census of our building permit activity is over by like eighty-nine units within five years. And that's not great. So I'm working with the census to correct that before the twenty twenty numbers are released. Um, and just, uh, just with regard to the forty-eight changes that I know we talked about a little last time. I spoke with the town council and there's nothing that we need to do for this town meeting. Um, it's too early. DHCD has to release their own regulations for what the communities are going to be required to do. So right now, we don't have anything that urgently has to be jumped on.
Okay, so basically we have the governor's rule, the new rule there, but, but it hasn't, but it hasn't been put into play by the state yet.
Right.
Okay, so we don't have to modify any of our bylaws till then.
Yeah, possibly October, but I'll keep you updated.
Yeah, all right. Okay, good, good. Good.
So that's.
Take some of the pain off the whole thing. Okay, now we're done?
Now we're done.
Uh, if, 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 if I can have a moment.
Please, Jeremiah, let's jump right in.
Thank you, everybody, for a, a great introduction to this whole group. And if there's any, um, additional information that would help me get up to speed for the next, uh, call, please share with me. I, I, I'm eager to learn anything I can to catch up. And I look to be more, uh, helpful in the.
Well, if you have your, if you have the iPad with all of the stuff that's in it, in that, in that, uh, main page in the left column, there's all kinds of things that are in there, as well as the zoning bylaws and everything else. You can, you can scroll through some of that, read it, get an idea of some of the stuff from the past.
Yeah, I should, I hope to pick up the iPad tomorrow.
Okay.
Um, and we can also talk, let's find a time to just schedule some time on the phone and I can try to talk you through everything, the kinds of applications we get, what to expect, how, how everything works, and we, we can set. Yeah.
Right.
Danielle's a great reference and information person, and go get her.
So is Debbie.
Is that about right, Warren?
Yes, yes. And I, but I also agree with Debbie. Debbie is a hard worker. She makes sure things get done.
She does, she does, absolutely.
And she stays on top of me and I'm, you know, come on, you gotta do this.
Well, I think I got enough signatures to be on the ballot, so thank you for everybody who helped me out with that and.
Yes, great, great.
That's good.
That means that I get to participate for a bit longer.
Yep, yeah, for a bit longer. Good, good deal. Well, we're looking forward to having somebody and, and, uh, as we said before, there was just a bunch of great choices. You know, just really, uh, happy with the quality of people that, that wanted to be on this board and, and we're very happy to have you, so. Okay, so we're all set then now, and, uh, like, we can all say goodnight. We're ready. You're all done. She always says one more thing. I have to be careful.
No.
All right, well then, good night all. Uh, thank you for coming to the meeting and for your participation.